It is 6:59, so I'm going to call the board meeting to order. We'll rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, this is the regular, the regular August school board meeting for the Oaks Public School District. It's Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, 7 o'clock a.m. In the boardroom are Bill Schmitz, Sheila Nagel, myself, Sonya Mehl, and Ryan Rosendahl, board members, and Board Member Robert Thorpe is joining us via Zoom. We have numerous visitors present and Brennan Hack is also present via Zoom. Otherwise, it's the host and Larry. Okay? The agenda was in your packet. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I would ask that you add to the agenda under action items custodian compensation adjustment.
Okay. We'll put that in for item H, custodian compensation. With that addition, then, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Sheila Nagel moves to approve the agenda with one addition. Is there a second? Schmitz seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. The motion carries. The agenda is approved. All visitors present today are staff members, so welcome and thank you for being here. And again, only Robert Thorpe and Brennan Hack, it looks like, on the Zoom, so thank you for coming. Public communications that were in your packet include a thank you from the Rath family, the Orner family, the Boeck family. Anything else?
Nope.
Someone else has joined us? Okay, good. All right. So, thank you for the public communications. Our action items. Item A, Title Funding Consolidated Application. Multiple pages of information or the copy of that application in your packet. Anything you need to highlight for us, April?
No, because the, I guess, annual application we have, we have the title applied for the title class. And then the titles two and four are using for technology and personalized learning.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the Title Funding Consolidated Application as presented in your packet? Rosendahl moves to approve. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion on the Title Funding Consolidated Application? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Robert?
Aye.
And aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries. The next item is B, Tuition Waiver. Had to get past the application to get to that. We have a a tuition agreement for a student in the sixth grade coming us to, from the, which is a resident of the Lemoore District. One student, one family. Is there a motion to approve that tuition waiver? Schmitz moves to approve. Is there a second to the motion? Nagel seconds. Again, one student from the Lemoore District to attend in the 2020-21 school year. Is there any discussion? Is there any?
Any busing, any busing issues or now, no busing required?
The, the location that the student lives in, we have a bus that goes there already to Verona. Yep.
Okay, and that is not marked on the application. Should it be? But there is a place where transportation provided. The transportation would be provided by the admitting district, which is us, and again, we do have a bus that goes right to the, the area of residence. Any further discussion?
Should we get the actual town?
Second Street South. It doesn't say Verona.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Robert?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. All those opposed say no. Motion carries. The next action item is a participation agreement with the Cheyenne Valley Special Education Unit. Very simple agreement. I, I don't recall having approved this before, but they're requiring it now?
They, they've asked of it, and we, we need to add this to our consent agenda items for our annual July meeting. It's an annual thing that states that we will participate with Cheyenne Valley Special Education. I don't know if they requested or not before. At our last board meeting, they, they handed those out and asked us to complete them. I honestly don't remember. April, do you? If we've done these before?
Okay, I don't recall it, and it's pretty.
We obviously want to be.
Yes, we would like to.
With Cheyenne Valley Special.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve our participation with Cheyenne Valley Special Education Unit? Nagel moves to approve. Is there a second? Rosendahl seconds. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion passes. The next page is the excess costs. That's related to the participation agreement, but can you just explain briefly what that means, either April or Greg? Our annual excess?
The Cheyenne Valley Special Ed has their, their typical budget, and then they have, they have built-in excess costs which are based on enrollment, and that's how they've done their budget forever. We've talked about trying to just have their budget be normal and not have excess cost, but this is the way they've done it for a long time, so that, that shows, you know, obviously the increase in what we're paying for.
So that's assessed to our school district?
Yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, years ago, I think maybe about the time I got on the school board, all funding was going to the districts, and then the districts would pay their assessment or tuition to the special education units. And now
Foundationing.
our, our funding, a portion of our funding is paid directly to the Cheyenne Valley Special Education Unit.
Correct.
And then this is what we pay in addition to what comes from the state.
Yes.
Okay. And these are obviously those for 20, for 21 is budgeted. The others are actual?
Yes.
All right, any other questions, board members? If not, we'll move on to liability insurance limit. We discussed this briefly at our retreat. We had previously had only a $1 million liability limit to. Okay? And we have increased it already, or you're requesting our consideration?
Okay. We have, I was looking at this, it says increased to match life, so the auto, the bus only had a million.
The bus only had a million, so we increased everything to 2 million.
Okay, I just want to ask, Robert, can you hear when others in the room are speaking?
Uh, about three quarters, so I heard that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so everyone, please speak up when you're speaking, so Robert can hear the discussion. All right, so what, what are the wishes of the board? If we take no action, then we're, we're maintaining a $2 million liability limit.
What's the standard, I guess, why? It's just simple protection. I didn't want to let my person, I didn't do it. That's why it's nice to have it all in one blank, because starting over here, wherever the hell. At least one, two on the buses. I wouldn't mind going three on the buses. Because that's where, to me, that's where your biggest exposure is, is going to be transportation. Yes, we have great bus drivers who do your best, but the bus goes in the ditch or somebody gets hurt, and you have 40 kids on that bus.
2 million was the max, and then recent defense footbath accident, they went back and they raised what, 10 million?
Who do you mean they raised? The?
Insurance.
Okay, so we can't, we, what you're saying then is that previously, we couldn't even purchase up to 10 million, and now we can. All right, thank you. What are your wishes? I heard a proposal that perhaps we should have 3 million on auto.
That's my suggestion, just based on that's where the most risk is. You're hauling 40, again, I guess it's past that, I mean, we have great bus drivers, that's negligence, but things happen. And if you have 30, 40 kids on a bus, and nice to have three versus two, and it's another 500 bucks, I understand, but I didn't realize I only had a million before, again, if you never looked at that. I'd recommend that 2 million in general, I think we're fine, but it might be smart to have the three on the buses. That's just my opinion, but of course, I'm also an insurance guy, that doesn't, I don't want anything happening where it goes beyond here, because it's on us. If a court comes and says, oh, you get 2 and 1/2 million in damages, we have two. We just cut our reserves in half.
Are you, are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion to shift 3, 3 million on the bus.
All right. Bill Schmitz has moved that we increase our liability limit on our auto policy to $3 million. Is there a second? All right, Nagel seconds. I'll just point out that once auto and general liability limits match, the following limits are available limits for auto and general liability must match. So, so then it, we're.
That's fine. Now, my question is, is the 582, that would raise up both? Because, okay, that's what we're dealing with this year.
Liability.
So now your general liability is three. Maybe this is the year you better have a little, because this is a crazy, crazy year.
Okay, so the motion.
That 582, verify with Mary that that's for both, for 582, you go up to, from two to three for another 580 bucks for both? I'm, I'm that too.
Okay, so the motion then is to increase our liability limits to $3 million, both for auto and general liability. Who seconded? Sheila? So Sheila seconded. Is that acceptable to you? All right, so that's our motion. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries. The next item is Committee Appointment Curriculum. Evidently, our policies require a specific appointment by the board for the curriculum committee. And this is the, the entire committee, not just the board appointing or sign, a board member signing up to be on the committee. And so the curriculum committee, as outlined in your packet, will, is proposed to be Craig Steinhop, Alicia Beta, Anna Sal, Brandon Beta, Sherry Christensen, John Baki, Larry Engel, Greg Dobitz, and the board representatives Sonya Mehl and Robert Thorpe. So I'm seeking a motion then to appoint officially the board, appoint those members to the curriculum committee. Have all agreed to serve?
No one said they haven't, or haven't told me that they wouldn't.
Okay. All right, so therefore, I'm seeking a motion to appoint the curriculum committee as listed in your packet. Ryan Rosendahl moves to appoint that committee. Is there a second? Schmitz seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries, and the committee is appointed. Calendar update. The 2020-21 school calendar is in your packet, and the change, I believe, would be in August days, August 26, 27, and 28, moving from instructional days to professional development days. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
It looks ironically similar to Valley City's.
Well, it's easier to read.
Yeah. I really liked the layout too, and Joshua was able to have the lady that they hired that created it send us the form, and we were able to modify it.
Love the collaboration. Okay, any, any action? We do need to take action to approve that calendar change, and that's the only, those are the only changes right now on this calendar that.
Yes, yep, moving the 26, 27, 28 to PD days from instructional days. We will not need to make up instructional days to do that. It won't cost the district any more money, because the staff are already getting paid, they're just doing different duties those days than they would have normally.
Okay, is there a motion regarding the calendar change? Nagel moves to approve the calendar as presented in our packet. Is there a second? Schmitz seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Next item is staffing update. The first item on the agenda, or the, the first staffing update is teacher. In your packet, there is a contract for Rod Kramer as an elementary teacher, signed on July the 20th. We do need to approve that. And I think we should take these separately. Because the coach, I don't think we have to even approve, right? Okay, that's just a report. Okay, and classified, we'll have a, that's just a discussion. So is there a motion to approve the contract as presented in your pocket for Rod Kramer as an elementary teacher? Schmitz moves to approve. Is there a second? Rosendahl seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Oh, thank you, Robert. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. All right. Do you want to report on the last two items in this topic, coaching and classified staff updates?
Yes. Caitlin Hagan has agreed to be the head volleyball coach, and that is in here. And as of yesterday, Zach Roberts has agreed to be the second assistant coach. So volleyball is full and complete. And I think now classified staff, who have we hired since the last board meeting that you wouldn't?
I think, I think scroll up one, it's all in there.
Okay, that's listed there. Jera is going to start interviews for the lunchroom position that we, Jared asked, due to the extra challenges of COVID and, and having to plate food differently, and her belief that we'll probably struggle to get a student to come work in there like we have before, she asked to have two five-hour employees instead of one, and I approved that. So she'll be hiring two of the four applicants we got for five hours a day in the kitchen. If we, if we get, if we get additional federal funding, that'll be an example of dollars that we'd be able to utilize for that extra five hours in the kitchen help. And then the custodian, we still have open, and you're going to talk about that later, but we do have two applicants. One was, one applicant is, does not meet minimum requirements. And another, I've been collaborating with, slash, trying to communicate with since July 27th to schedule an interview. And so as of this writing, we do, we do not have a candidate that we filled for the custodian, and still a dire challenge. You'll talk about that in a minute, so.
All right. Thank you. So the next item, the, the item that we added to our agenda was custodian compensation. You have in front of you, well, you've just heard the challenge that we faced in hiring custodians. Sheila and I were on the compensation committee, and, you know, all staff received raises from last year to this year. What you have in front of you is an example of what pay increases would mean to our budget. Not sure that pay increase, or an increased advertised rate would, would bring in more applicants, but what, we, we don't know what to do next, so administration is seeking our guidance and input.
I, I said it's like fishing, but we need to change the lure if we aren't able to land fish, and so I, we're, we agreed that we try that sign-on bonus until August 1st. It's obviously long past August 1st. And we still have a full-time need for custodians, so I'm asking for your help in having us do, take the next step or do something else to entice more applicants and, and applicants, quality applicants.
I'd say that when we agreed to do the sign-on bonus, both Sheila and I were sensitive to what does that mean to our existing staff, you know, how do they feel about that? So that, that, the next step then is, if we're going to increase the, the starting wage for a custodian, then does that mean that we should increase all of, all of our custodians? And if we do so, is it, should it, should we start with just those who are custodians? And, you know, if we look at the maintenance and transportation, the two that are higher, classified with higher wages with both maintenance and transportation, should they also be increased, or are we just looking at the day-to-day custodial positions? So what are your wishes?
I guess I'd add too, if you look at the, if you look at the sheet that April put together, if you look down the bottom where it says total increase, if you chose any of those options and it, and it made adjustments to each one of those listed there, then the total increase is that last dollar in the line that ranges from eight to 24, or four.
Do you really think 50 cents an hour, a buck an hour, then change?
I don't know.
I don't think it's gonna, I honestly don't think it's gonna, there's lots of people in the community looking for employers, they're not filling them either. But I mean, I'd try something.
You said you're still playing phone tag, basically, one?
Yes. I would say phone tag, not responding to email for several days, and not responding to text or phone call for several days. Let's leave that there.
What what advertising are you using? I, I see it's, it's on in the Oaks Times.
Oaks Times, our website, Facebook, job service. We talked about doing the radio too. I don't, we, we didn't do that, did we? No. Anna's been going door-to-door dropping off.
And you do have a couple of part-time temporary.
Yeah, part-time help, but that's going to cover the maternity leave for Nadia. So we're really, we're really sitting two full-time custodian short, and then you put, you put the added cleaning, dust affecting, that we believe is necessary.
And neither one of these is interested in the full-time.
No, not long-term.
What are you seeing, Sheila? You're, you're saying that other employers are seeking, are, are, is our wage competitive, our wage and benefits competitive with what you're seeing?
I think our wages are higher than what I'm seeing. So that's why I'm not sure that increasing it's going to make a difference.
And I, I think of it as, you know, this wage is not something that someone would move here from Fargo for, you know. It has to be a couple, or, you know, a single who's always, someone who's already in the areas more, are more likely more likely applicant.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to blindly start raising 14, 15, and 16 dollars, because.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's going to help, but what will? Does anybody have any other ideas?
I said, we, we reached out, it's a, it's a tough market, is there also incentives not to work?
That 600 fell off. I thought maybe we'd see something then, but we haven't so far.
Yeah, I'm like the wages we're starting.
All right, so I'm not hearing a motion, so I'm, my, my feeling is the consensus is just that we need to keep digging and.
And we are advertising it depending on experience, so it could be higher.
Right, yep, it's DOE. Not DOE.
Maybe that's the problem. That might be considered even though. Would, would we, i- if no one is hired, would we have to consider increasing overtime for those, are they willing?
Increasing overtime, or maybe we contact, maybe we consult with a cleaning outfit, come on Aberdeen, or Valley City, or Jamestown. I'm, I'm pretty sure, though, that number will go really quickly to, you know.
Are our custodians currently doing any overtime?
I'd have to ask April on that.
Typically, the only overtime are custodians during activities, where they come in to clean the room, like right now, no.
You don't have any that you could strong?
No. I mean, there was plenty of, plenty of applicants for the, for the library job, which was the same part.
And that's part time. Without benefits.
Yes. That clearly get all over. So. To me, there's. That's the difference. I guess all I can really say, well, for best, maybe think about smiling, because might be out there that don't know about it. I don't, it's, I, I said throwing money out there, it also gets you in big trouble. Because I mean, it's gonna be a better applicant.
Ryan, you still, let's try to fill out what happens, is there another avenue?
Really, everything that we would do, you were currently doing, we would try to hire somebody for over a year for more money than this and haven't gotten any applicants, so. Of course, it's again, it's not easy work, it's labor. Out in the field, labor for us, I guess, that, not a lot of people want to do anymore, so that's the trouble that we have, but.
So you don't have anybody you could send us?
I don't. Well, yes, yeah, we're, I mean, our, our starting is several dollars higher than this, we can't get people to apply, so.
So there's where I'm thinking if, if there was a couple, for example, out of town and, and one was interested in the twenty plus dollar an hour job. And one in the thirteen fifty to fifteen, depending on experience. If, if somehow we can package our, our community's employer, employment needs and reach out further. To, to people who might be at this time in their lives inclined to come back closer to home or would prefer to live in a smaller town.
Have you put it with the chamber? She does those email blasts and if people contact her.
We've not, we should.
You know, people moving to town.
We should send it to Kasha, it's a good idea.
Along with bus drivers, because I know, it sounds like you, you've, you've come to a solution for one bus driving position, but we're always, it seems, looking for bus drivers, right?
Yeah, we're, we should have them all know with, you know, our time guys basically. No one drives, one guy drives morning, one guy drives after. But it's, at least it's full. That hasn't, that's been a struggle too.
Dave, could you kind of give us an update? This is Arlie's position we're filling, so what, what area? Because I'm not sure everyone knows, what area of the school that is totally, that she covered and handled? It's the entire West Wing, so kindergarten, all kindergarten sections, first grade sections, second grade sections and now third grade sections, right? Lunchroom? Is it, was it the South Wing too? The four, five and six?
No, just West Wing. And she set up for, in the multipurpose room for lunch and then cleaned up afterwards. It was down, cleaned up, otherwise it was all the rooms in the, the West Wing. And then with the field office area, that area and then the special needs area.
Is, what's your, we're gonna have hundreds of people in there, starting on a regular basis on August 31st. And so if we don't have anybody, I'll have to secure something else because that's gotta be cleaned and disinfected. So we'll, you know, I guess my thought is that we'd reach out and get quotes from different places for cleaning services. And we're gonna have to just contract with them to do it until we. We can't not clean it and disinfect it, I, I just don't have an option. I wish I had better news for you, but. We just don't have people to do it.
All right, I hear no motion. We've had a lot of discussions. Alternatives and, no, all right. Restart plan review.
I don't have any changes for the restart plan that we've, we've submitted that or sent that out to the public and staff. And, you know, as we said before, it'll probably be a fluid document that, that will always be looking and seeking changes, so. No further comments.
In my travels, I hear. My, the people that I'm, I have visited with are very interested in having things be as normal as possible. And there are a lot of things that are not going to be normal. We, we will reevaluate and review, reevaluate and reassess this weekly. If, if we, if we need to make changes, we will.
I think a lot of people have seen a change in their kids' demeanor and they're looking forward to getting them back into some normal groove.
All right, school policy review. We have two policies this month for first readings. Got to get to it. Oh, what happened? Oh, I'm in the wrong place, sorry. A A C, non discrimination and anti harassment. Along with a board regulation and A B B A tobacco use also with a board regulation. Anything you want to highlight on these first readings, April?
Again, it's more just changing the, I guess, legal background. So as required by the law, they put it, instead of, you know, just different, I guess, cleanup. There's only a couple of them that had major changes, but otherwise it had nothing significant, I guess. And a lot of it has to do with the Title IX changes that are.
Okay, so I'm looking on page four of A A C, the. Anti discrimination. The, in the middle of the page, the green underscored language, the board designates. And then it's bracketed title as the Title IX coordinator. In the previous paragraph, it says the board designates, we deleted that the board designates the superintendent. And then the next paragraph, we haven't designated the superintendent. Shouldn't we be designated in the superintendent?
The changes to Title IX now at the, the four.
There's a, there's four different categories of people and Anna, Brandon, Brennan and I have all. Received training on the new Title IX guidelines. But the coordinator, the coordinator is still the superintendent, but then there's three other, there's a decision maker and investigator, what's the fourth one? What's that? Yeah, the appeal decision maker, so there's four separate categories of, of people that will be included. Where before we just had a Title IX coordinator.
Okay, so on page four, when we see this again next month, the board will still be designating the superintendent as the Title IX coordinator.
I think some schools are considering the school board president.
Okay, well, we won't be doing that.
Consider that too.
All right, any other questions or comments on A A C or the accompanying regulation?
Just a side comment here, April, the board regulation, the page numbers are off. We have two page ones.
All right, moving on to A B B A, the tobacco. Comprehensive model school policy for tobacco use. It looks like there's substantial expanded language for electronic smoking devices. Oh, I'm looking on page three. What I highlighted was it says that appropriate signage will be posted throughout the districts. Do, do we have appropriate signage in different places?
I don't, I don't think we do. I don't think we have any. None, I don't think we have any tobacco signs I know of, so we're gonna need to secure those.
Well, and also that's new language, so maybe, maybe it's not required under our policy. It seems like it should be, but, so that's new language. So if we adopt this, then we need to get some more, we need to get some signage. Yeah, says we're supposed to review this at least once a year. The, this is added language, the last item.
You're on page three still?
I'm on page four.
Last time we stopped and somebody ended up in surgery, so.
All right, any other comments or questions on these two first readings? If not, is there a motion to approve A A C, A B B A and the accompanying board regulations as first readings today? Nagel moves to approve, is there a second? Schmitz seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. We have no second readings today. And we did not opt to do any existing policy review because that, all board members were on overtime, so we didn't want to add anymore. All right. We're on to reports, activities director, Mr. Hack, you're with us, welcome.
Good morning. Give you a quick rundown kind of of what's going on in the activities world. So football started yesterday and I talked to Coach Dobitz and they have thirty seven. All males this year out for football, so that's a really good number for, you know, small town, class B football. That'll put us at one of the larger teams in our area down here. So that was really exciting to hear that we have that many people interested in football in our school this year. So they have four coaches, two of which are carryovers in Coach Dobitz and Coach Peterson. And then also Jeff Miller was added and Sean Courageon is also joining them on the football coaching roster this year. So kind of what's happening with football right now, everybody's probably aware that we lost our game with Bowman County at this point. So we have been reaching out to other schools in the area and we've also sent a email out to the listserv of all the football schools in North Dakota. To attempt to secure another game. Unfortunately, nobody has responded to us yet, kind of late in the process to try to find a game, but we're trying. So if, if that doesn't end up working out, what we're tentatively planning to do is hold an inter squad scrimmage for the football team. In place of a game, just to kind of have not such a long leg period there of, of almost four weeks of practicing before our first game for football. So that, excuse me, would, would get kind of long to, to not have anything for, for everybody involved. So that's what's happening as far as scheduling goes. And I'll kind of cut, touch on this for both volleyball and football with different guidelines and things like that. We are in region one for football, so one of the directives is to figure out some different language and guidelines for attendance and tiebreakers scenarios. And things like that, so that is in the process currently with all of the region one teams. And all, and I'll kind of touch on everything here in a second with that. Volleyball is starting Monday, as Dr. Steinhaus said, Caitlin Hagan was hired as our head coach. We did offer the assistant coach position that was open to Zach Roberts yesterday. So I haven't received his intent to hire back yet, but by all indications, it sounds like he's ready to join with us with that position as well. With volleyball, also updates that Marine has posted on the website too. As far as varsity tournaments, Central Cast, Northern Cast and Langdon have all canceled those tournaments. And we've also lost tournaments in the JV, C squad, junior high and elementary levels in Ellendale and Lisbon. And I think that's kind of just the reality of, of our situation right now is that. I, I don't think, you know, many volleyball tournaments are happening statewide this year, so that, that was not unexpected at this point. And those announcements will be sent out to the public hopefully in the next few days, once we get official notification. Don't have numbers yet on volleyball, but just talking to, to the coaches and some of the players, I think our, our upper level classes of the junior and senior are a little light on numbers. But our, our younger grades in the sophomore and freshman have, have pretty large amounts of, of kids in then. And then you also look, you know, beyond that in the junior high level, they are probably anticipating maybe close to twenty eighth graders alone. So there's a very large amount of them down in that end, so. And then kind of the last sticking point is the restart guidelines. And actually Carrie and I are going to be on a conference call this afternoon with region three, which is essentially all of our schools minus the football team. And we're gonna try to formalize some policies and standards for all of the different schools. So that, once, you know, that kind of gets kicked off, where we have some sort of a guideline of, of where all the schools are at. And trying to get similar setups for each school as far as what we're gonna do, so that, you know, Oaks isn't different from Ellendale, that's different from Linton and Kidder County. And, and just try to standardize that across the, the board as far as what it looks like for attendance and things like that. It seems to, at this point, probably the ticketing per athlete is, it sounds like what most schools are going to go to. And there are some regions that have already approved their level, so region one, for instance, is using wristbands for entry at all of their events. So they, they're giving out wristbands and in order to get into their volleyball, for instance, over there. They are requiring their spectators to have a wristband and then they're limiting the amount of wristbands that they're giving out. So with that, it was in the guidelines, just to kind of recap, so everybody understands too. Capacity and attendance limits for the different levels. Blue has no restrictions, it would be as we are normal. Green is limited to a seventy five percent capacity or a maximum of five hundred. And then if we're in the yellow, we are limited to fifty percent capacity or a maximum of two hundred and fifty. And hopefully after our meeting today, we'll, we'll have some information that I plan on sending out to the public, just so that we kind of have an idea. And everybody's aware of kind of our policies and procedures and things like that. Once we have the chance to, to kind of talk with all of our area schools and, and go from there. That's what I got.
Excellent, good report, Mr. Hack, any questions? I just would ask you not to say that we lost the game with Bowman.
We didn't lose it, yeah, Bowman chose not to travel to Oaks.
All right, any other questions? If not, thank you again and Mrs. Sell, I think you're up. Okay, remember that Roberts by Zoom, so please speak up.
All right. Today we are doing kindergarten screening, we are screening thirty eight kids. But we have thirty nine kids that are gonna be in our kindergarten class as of right now. We had a couple that are gonna be in kindergarten for the second year and then we're screening a couple of kids that are gonna come home next year. They've already made that decision, but they'd be off, they're in the hospital screening it. So, so what we're doing is they're putting a flight pool door down there and just eight moms or dads and one person in family. We're social distancing them down there and we're taking them into separate rooms with the kid that we're gonna be doing speech, language and our, the hearing. And then we're gonna be doing kindergarten readiness skills and then we're gonna just be doing a general, the one that's required by the state that's a normal test. For kindergarten readiness, so we're doing that. I, not too much other teachers are here in the building. If you ever want to wander around and see what some of our teachers are doing, they've got to be creative in their rooms, they're ready to get going, they want to be here. I've been trying to tell them, maybe just, just be really careful not to get yourself too far ahead. Because if we go to a different color, we have to do something different, we don't be disappointed and you've got all this stuff, right, you go. So just to kind of pace yourself and, because we got a long time, the school starts three weeks. A lot of change in that time, so hopefully not, but. And just trying to be really creative, like Sean Creighton was in yesterday, asking about Piatt. Doing some creative things to make sure that we're meeting the requirements and being as safe as we can for the kids, so. Doing some creative things to make sure that we're meeting the requirements and being as safe as we can for the kids. So, you know, we've done some things over the last couple of months that we've never done before, and we found that they actually work pretty well. So maybe this is going to give us a chance to try things that we wanted to try before, because we kind of get stuck in the same old, same old, and we might find some things that we like.
All right, any questions for Mrs. Sell? Hearing none. Mr. Beta?
I've got a light report as well. Right now, I'm sitting at two hundred and twenty-eight students, seven through twelve. Pretty consistent to where we've been the last few years, start the school year. We're still working on student schedules. I met with students in the end of July, and I would say as a whole, we're probably close to seventy percent complete on most schedules for the ninth and twelfth graders, so that helps out a lot, so. Other families have vacations or couldn't make it or had to work, so we'll get it done finalized through the next couple of weeks before school starts. Last couple of things, we've been talking about some staff have been asking, but usually we have seventh grade tours in the spring, and they come down, and they get to see everything, waiting to do that. So we're floating the idea around, and it's not an official thing, but maybe for open house, allowing seventh graders to come and do an open house tour themselves. Break them into smaller groups with Mr. Brecker and myself. Let them see all their classrooms. They have to get through technology, but go through some of the things we didn't get to go through in the springtime, so they're not so nervous to start the school year. Because it's a big change coming from sixth grade to seventh grade. So on that, I've got staff that are gearing up and getting their rooms ready, too, and we're ready to get back, but that's a light report I got for you.
No, you know, we had like thirty-two kids that we thought were going to come, but we've been calling on them, and it's surprising. I think I only gotten like, see, I know for sure three kids is all that I thought that are going distance learning. We've had a couple that have decided to homeschool, but it isn't like, you know, we thought that we were going to have sixteen of them, but most of the families have decided that they are going to come to school. So that's good news.
So Brandon, you said you have two twenty-eight, seven through twelve, and you just said kindergarten. Do you have a number?
Seventy-two, you know, like coming in and coming out.
So we're right, right at five hundred?
I think that that was the number I saw on there.
And then, yeah, and you, we've got registration of new to the district students. Is that today or this, this whole week, this week? Okay, so. That's right.
We have three, three that are distance learning.
Yeah.
And a couple are in homeschool.
Yes.
Couple families, a couple of kids.
Well, a couple of families that have decided that they're not homeschool, but one of the families, two of my kids, so, and they've got some.
And kind of goes, are these people just have young kids, or do they have kids up to?
I believe the one that has up to kids.
Yeah.
And, and so there's no action we have to take on homeschooling. They simply have to fill out a form that notifies the district that they're going to homeschool.
Correct.
All right, Robert, can you still hear? And do you have any questions?
I heard most of it. My question, I guess, would be how many did we end up having that have taken the distance learning route so far in the district?
Okay, Anna, you said three.
I said three for sure in my, and then there's one waiting. They're training, and then wait for weather, so right on, that's ten, at least at this point.
Elementary, less than ten students total.
And you were, you were at thirty.
Well, yeah, I was curious. Yeah, I had sixteen that they got there in the distance learning.
Okay, and Brandon?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna call today. The deadline's Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
So I'm kind of just waiting to make it one shot to losing the two or three that might be last minute, so I'm trying to actually decide if I should make phone calls or emails. They're like a paper trail, but I don't know how to respond to. I'd say my list is closer now to about fifteen mark that are on there.
Students.
Yeah.
And Brandon says he has about fifteen students that have presently indicated that, but he hasn't confirmed, and the deadline for notification is tomorrow.
So possibly twenty-five then is what I'm hearing, district-wide?
At, at the most. Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
I don't have any two twelve shout-outs. I do have just two quick things. I received a letter from Governor Burgum on Friday that he appointed me to the Education Standards and Practices Board, and that appointment begins July and ends June of twenty twenty-three, so. North Dakota Council of Educational Leaders submitted my name for that board and the board for TFFR. And then the government picks from the number of submissions that he received. So I'll begin that. I'm excited to, to do that and join that, and there are times where we have joint meetings that Sonny is part of.
Once a year.
The state CTE board. And then the other piece of information is, we received our first quote for the two roofs on the high school and elementary. And I apologize, but I was hundreds of thousands of dollars off in my quote high of what I thought it was going to be, so very positive news.
And we're awaiting a couple of more?
Yep, waiting a couple more.
And.
It looks a lot better than what I anticipated originally.
And are you expecting that this work will be done this fall?
No, no, the, the expectation will be is that we'll secure, you'll secure a bid and have that done next summer. So that'll be the main, that'll be the main maintenance issue next year is, next summer is the high school and elementary roof. Roofs.
Roofs. Okay.
Got a question. I'm completely, I'm jumping to it.
Okay.
Kind of with the, the biggest project we finished this year is the track. I wanted to walk around it last week. Just got a question. They run the sprint down that, they do, they run the sprints down the west side, and it's extended down north, but it's all this ground. I'm, I'm running lane eight, I'm falling off the track. Why didn't they, I remember we talked about this. We're having some, obviously a lot of maintenance on that part, because right now, lane seven and eight, when you get down to the hundred meter dash.
Yeah, I can't, well, the, a couple of things. When Sam talked to me about it, he said that they rarely ever do the extension thing more, and he said a lot of those extensions were that when they had timers, that's where they had to be, and so they did that. Now, he said with the fat timing system, whatever that's called, they're not needing that, and so. He, he didn't say anything about schools having issues with people. It sounds like they sprint and they just keep taking a corner.
That's the new way is.
I guess that's the new way.
Trying to go straight. It's like, okay, make sure you take a left turn there. This is pretty steep.
Right, so that.
Do some, some landscaping.
Yes, that's the answer on that. And the second part is that we, the track is much higher than it was before. And I've teased that we're going to have people that, you know, fall off and then roll down the hill through the grass, but we talked, Dave and Roxy and I talked yesterday, and, you know, we talked about options such as putting gravel on there, but having gravel and then having it dusty all the time, and people walk from there on the track, I don't think is our option. So I, I think what we need to do is get dirt put in there and, and seed it. The problem is to get it done this year and not have a muddy mess in the spring is going to be almost impossible. So Roxy and Dave and I agreed that our best bet is probably to have to leave it like it is for the first year. And then as soon as the season's completed next year is get that filled in and then planted, so that by the next year, we have a gradual slope and it's grass. Knowing that we need to keep at least six inches of no vegetation growing by, you know, spring roundup, so that we don't have weeds growing into asphalt or under the track surface.
Okay, anything else? Well, since there were no shout-outs, I'll just give a shout-out to Dr. Steinhoff and his team, the principals and everyone that served on the, the restart team and all. Since, since we were disconnected, I don't know, did you hear me shout out a positive comment to the, to our administration and our team for the restart plan?
Uh, no, it was Bill and Craig were talking about the track edges when I, when I lost you.
Okay, so then I want to circle back and again publicly say that I appreciate the efforts of Craig and the principals and all that were involved in creating the restart plan. I think they did a super job in a, with a challenging project, and I trust that we, they and we will continue to monitor and reevaluate and make adjustments as needed as we move forward. Since then, we've approved the minutes of the four board meetings that were held in July and up until now in August. With that, we're going to move on to review of financial reports. First is, we'll look at the reconciliation balance sheet and revenue and expense reports. We typically take those all in one motion, so they were in your packet. So are there any questions or anything you want to highlight, April?
Everything is pretty standard. I did not have the budget entered, that's why.
Oh, yeah, I swear over budget on every single item, but that's because the budget hasn't been put into the software yet, so. Okay, is there a motion regarding the financial reports reconciliation, balance sheet, revenue and expense? Bill Schmitz moves to approve the reconciliation, balance sheet, and revenue and expense reports. Is there a second?
A second.
Sheila seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries. Let's move on to the review of bills. There were several pages of bills to be approved in your packet as well as a short list of invoices for, that were emailed last night. My question is with Oaks Community Hospital for the sports medicine agreement, I see that they have billed us for two years of hourly work by a trainer over and above our basic agreement with them.
So the agreement was redone, just always writing for, close to March, and instead of doing a flat rate, it went to an hourly rate in which the trainer has the calendar and reports their hours, and then submits them at the end of the year, so they can be, I guess, compared and verified before we pay. Basically, it was done because doing a flat rate, someone loses out, either the hospital or the school, and so we wanted to kind of, I guess, bring that up a little bit.
We weren't billed for twenty eighteen. I mean, this is the only bill that we received for twenty eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty. I mean, they just, they didn't, they didn't bill us, so we didn't. This is the first time we paid for these years.
A couple of years, so we were behind. We had that paid for last month, so this is a catch-up, probably for.
And do they intend to bill us every year in a timely manner?
Yeah.
Because that's been my frustra, one of my frustrations with that agreement.
So it's on my calendar that in May I will contact the hospital.
I think they should be doing it monthly or quarterly, per season. I mean, how, how are you going to go in May and say, oh, Greg, did, did they really, were they really here these many hours?
So we could do it by the season, you know, so when the fall season starts and I hear it's possible, then we can do that.
I think that's far better. I, I've never.
Trust, but it also verification. Like, that's a long time ago.
I don't like getting surprised bills two years later. That, that's a struggle for me. There's no way you can go back and verify those hours. I mean, they, they may have recorded, I mean, I, I hope they did record it on a calendar, and you're, you're verifying as best you can. Anyway, any other questions on the bills that were presented? I did highlight something called eSpark. I trust that it's some learning software through three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
It is. It's for the elementary for distance learning, in case we have to transfer in distance learning. It is for math and reading. We, Abel and I talked, because there's like COVID funds, because there's specifically, you know, needs for.
Okay, and so you said in case we have to transition to distance learning, just, just turning the calendar ahead a few months when we have, when we anticipate if we have snow days in, in the winter, are, are we going to be able to? Do we anticipate being able to do a distance learning snow day and get credit for those hours?
There is nothing that's, that I know of that is going to prohibit us from doing it based on regulations or law.
Well, I think that's a positive outcome of, of this whole thing, if, if we can make it happen. Any other questions on the bills? I questioned April yesterday on the power bills, because I thought it seemed like a lot of money for not having any students in the building, but it was normal. Oh, and the fuel, I, I thought, I thought, I was thinking it was bus fuel, but it was the heating fuel. Thought we wouldn't, didn't need nine or ten thousand dollars of bus fuel in the last month or two, but it was heating fuel that's filled annually. All right, any other questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the bills as presented? Nagel moves to approve. Is there a second? Rosendahl seconds. Any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries. All right. Um, no, I think we should probably just sit around and visit for twenty minutes, because we wouldn't want to be done early, would we? Anybody?
We haven't put any time in.
Future meeting day. Anybody have anything else for the good of the order? Any, anybody have something they want to shout out?
One thing I did get complimented on was you as the board using Zoom as an option for people to attend. They really appreciate having that option and be able to go back and watch the recording and they, so thank you for doing that. And, you know, they've even said if it's all, at all possible that you could continue doing that, so there's a live option, that'd be fantastic, but. So kudos to you for doing our school board meetings this way, and, and kudos to Larry for helping and make sure that it happens and it functions, and that it provides an opportunity for people to participate without having to be here physically.
Right, I appreciate that Robert was able to join us effectively this morning. I'm also very thankful that we, in collaboration with some of our supporter organizations, were able to install the cameras, the streaming cameras, in both of our gyms last winter. I'm anticipating that they will, I hope they'll be well-used this year with maybe folks aren't going to be able to come and see the activities that we're going to be having, so I'd like to make maximum use of those to keep, keep our kids in the public eye as much as possible. Anything else? Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty at seven AM, and that will be immediately followed by the preliminary budget hearing. Which is required by law and needs to be held between, I don't know, two particular dates, and that works for us to have it right after our next board meeting. Hearing no further business. We've reached the end of our agenda, and I will declare this meeting adjourned at eight eleven. Thank you.